Hey, welcome, everybody. This is the, sorry, thank you. This is the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, June 23rd, 2025. At this time, we have, I believe, five members present. Okay, and I think, is there public comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no public comments, so we'll close public comments at this time. All right, so we have a couple of discussion items for today. And the first one is continued discussion regarding budget challenges, setting options for potential levy to fund safety services, public safety services, and review of draft resolution 25-2021, which we all received, and there is a copy of on your desk. Okay, so, let's see. I think the appropriate point at this point is to, I wanted to basically address a point that I think I made last time, and I think the mayor did as well, about what happens with the approximately half million dollars per year that we cut from the budget in the last, well, in the current biennium. And what if we restored that? Because they will fund services like, for instance, help for our public, our human resources department, which has been under the gun quite a bit, and for other services like that, that, you know, we really can't function very well without. And so what I did was, I tried to reconstruct Councilmember Lebo's spreadsheet on, you know, and I tried to come up with formulas so that they would sort of work. And so what you're looking at is, and I don't know if folks at home can see it, but I've got a spreadsheet in front of me. The top part basically is cuts not refunded, meaning that those are the numbers I tried to recreate on Councilmember Lebo's sheet, using a 5.60 annual increase in the general fund revenue and in expenses. And then the levy rate revenue, which is increasing the 3% CPI. And so the numbers came out roughly the same, I mean, to within basically three significant figures. So I told said, okay, that's, that's probably okay. All right, so what I did then was to, in the, in that middle part of the spreadsheet, where it says cuts refunded, that's putting in the $910,000 that we cut from this biennial budget back into just the 2027, 28 general fund expenses. So that's why that number, 29,500, 29,500,000 and change, is much bigger than in the above table, where the general fund expenses for that same biennium are 28,600,000 and change. And so that was the only change I made to the table and just made it go forward. And as somewhat predictably, the variance grows. But by the time we get to 2031, and we run to the end of the levy, the potential levy, in fact, the balance is not super different. So what this says to me is that I think we've got the budget sort of stabilized so that we can restore those cuts. So that was why I ran this. And obviously, this is my attempt at trying to reconstruct a fairly complex municipal financial situation. And the formulas are just basically adding simple interest. So this is by no means going to be accurate to the nth degree, but nevertheless, hopefully gives us a signpost. All right, so does anybody have any questions on this? I'm sorry I gave it to you so late. And so obviously, if we need to discuss it on the Thursday meeting, we can do that, too. Councilmember Lebo.
I would just remark, I haven't had a chance to review this and trying to reflect back on the, on the reductions in the mayor's budget that we ultimately accepted. So I'll take a moment to look at that because I'm not recalling all this.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Goldman.
Yes, sir, I may have missed it when you were explaining about, could you maybe just one more time explain the difference between the top section and the bottom section?
Absolutely. So way over on the right side there, it says restored funding 910, 910,000 biennial. Those were the cuts that we made to the, as Councilmember Lebo mentioned, to the mayor's budget this, this biennium. And so what I did was I took that number, which is not included in the 2025, 2026 general fund expenses, and put it back, added it to, added that number to the general fund expenses for 27, 28 biennium. That's why that number is different between the two, the top table and that middle table.
And if I could follow up, so that explains why the expenses goes from 28.6 to 29.5. But then if we move over to the 29, 30 column, it looks like they're, the expenses are practically the same. So shouldn't that 900,000 be having a compounding effect in the 29, 30 column and the 31, 32 column?
Yes, and I completely agree with you. This is one of the things that is sort of baffling to me about that. But what seems to be happening is that the, the way that the formulas work, I made it very simplistic. So the way that the 29, 30 biennial numbers were calculated was, take the general fund expenses and the general fund revenue for 27, 28, subtract the expenses from the revenue, and you get that negative number, that $2.5 million negative number. And then what I did was I added the levy rate revenue onto the balance and added that to the 27, 28 revenue to get the 29, 30 revenue. The expenses just grew, I believe, at that 5.6% rate. And so I can't explain to you why it didn't get bigger by another, say, near a million dollars, but it seems to be buried in the percentages someplace. And I haven't had, that's why I got a little frustrated with this, I didn't have time to tease that all out. Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you. Is there an opportunity perhaps to have the city staff review this? And maybe they can offer an opinion about what they see as potential revenue and expenditure growth, or help us understand these figures.
I got a thumbs up from our staff that are here, so thank you very much. Yeah, okay, so yes. Director Vaughn has a comment.
So, Budget Chair or Councilmember Lebo, specifically, are you asking about the difference of the 20, not, between 27, 28 going from 29 to 31? Or I just want to be clear on the question.
I guess my question was more about looking at these numbers in general and see if the assumptions that are used seem relevant and that the numbers then do add up. I wasn't asking a specific, but to have the city staff review this in general to say, do these, do these calculations make sense based upon the assumptions that are used here?
At a high level overview, yes. It was basically Deputy Mayor built this off of using your previously presented spreadsheet.
Yes, but to Councilmember Goldman's point, if we increased in 27, 28 by a million dollars, then that would be reflected in 29, 30 as well. So it's, I'm just asking for a review.
Right. I very much appreciate that comment, and thank you, Councilmember Lebo. Yes, check my work, please.
Exactly what I was gonna say, we will do that.
Yeah, are there any other comments on this? Just wanted to basically throw this into the mix, just to basically make sure that we understand what we did in the last, this current budget.
I would just offer up an appreciation for doing that, because I know that that was lightly talked on the last meeting, just about the cuts and how do they come back in. So thank you for doing that and appreciate the verification from the team that these numbers are accurate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember and Vice Chair Goldman.
Yeah, I'll echo Councilmember McCartney that I think that we should be looking at restoring those cuts, that those cuts are not sustainable long term. And I want, I would like to see the, you know, the numbers that Director Vaughn generates, just to, it'll give me a better feel for what the appropriate levy rate. Should it be 32 cents? Should it be 24 cents? You know, being able to see, you know, either with or without storing, with or without restoring the cuts, 32 versus 24 cents, what does that look like six years from now? So I think that would be very helpful to me in my deliberations.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Anybody else have any other comments on this? All right, so I think then, you know, one of the things I want to explain about those columns that Councilmember Goldman's talking about is that the formula is really simplistic, in my view. It's just taking the previous years or previous bienniums expenses, multiplying by one plus the annual growth rate, which we have here is 5.6%, and then adding to that the balance in row 14. And that's really all that formula is. So I could not explain to you why basically that added $910,000 isn't showing up recurring every single biennium after that, except to say that, in fact, it's now built into the budget, and so basically it's masked by that. Okay, so moving on then, I think Councilmember Riddle, you had something you wanted to mention?
At this stage, to hit the button, I just wanted to bring up sort of, remind council of the conversations that we had when we were looking at balancing the budget, and we were leaning on utility taxes to help bridge that gap to where we were closer to balanced, so that we wouldn't have as large of an imbalance in our budget. And recognizing that those types of taxes that they're, they're kind of, as I refer to, is nickel and diming our community, and it's, you know, hitting them in a less predictable way. You know, some of those are two-month, you know, bills, some of them are one-month bills. And those sorts of utility taxes, while a useful tool and something that I think council was right in using is that was the tool available to us at the time. I think we all agreed that it would have been, it would be nice to be able to roll those back to where we were and loop those funds back into something that's more of a voter-approved approach, rather than a councilmatic approach. Where we are right now in this process, this is, this process, I don't think has the time or the intent of being public safety-focused to be able to address that. But I just wanted to remind council of the conversations that we have and that I think we should continue to have that conversation in budget and finance and see if there's an appropriate time for us to revisit those taxes to see if that can, we can provide some relief on those councilmatic taxes in the future. I just don't want us to forget kind of the conversations that we had back then. I did look at kind of what the dollar amount is that's coming in, and it isn't insignificant. So it will be a long discussion in budget and finance if we were to pursue, how do we, how do we, how do we make those taxes more equitable and, and better distributed as something like in addition, like, like we are looking at these increases through the property tax method? So just wanted to bring that up. If you have any questions or don't remember what we talked about, the internet is an amazing thing. It's gotten us all in there. And I see a hand from our new Councilmember McCartney.
That's Councilmember McCartney.
Hi there. Thanks for that context. I was just wondering, not to put you on the spot, but do you happen to know how, just a ballpark of how much revenue we're talking about that's been generated by the utility tax?
Yes, I did, I pulled it out of the budget book, and I think I actually might have it in an easy-to-find option here. But I think adding them together was right around, I think, 450, 450,000, something in that range.
Okay, yeah, not insignificant.
Not insignificant, correct.
Cool.
And that, yeah, and, and that was the, the additional taxes we put on for, above what we had already in place, so.
Great, thank you.
Following along, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for the comment. Does anybody else have any questions for Councilmember Riddle? Councilmember Lebo. All right, well, Councilmember, I wanted to thank you for bringing that up, you know, and we did have that discussion. And I think, you know, you mentioned the Business and Finance Committee, and it is an appropriate venue to bring that up there. So look forward to seeing more for, further discussions on this, because you're right. This does basically hit the pocketbook, and it is a councilmatic decision. And as Councilmember McCartney pointed out, not an insubstantial amount. So look forward to having that discussion. Thank you. Okay, so anybody have any other comments about the continued discussion regarding budget challenges?
One of the items that was struck was that whereas the city's regular property tax levy rate is 71 cents per 1,000 of assessed valuation, which is, don't need the, the rest of it, but I think it's important for transparency that we tell the voters what the current rate is, because you can do the math and figure out that in Section 3, it does say what the, yeah, let's see. So in Section 3, it does say that the, the city shall, shall be authorized to levy an additional regular property tax in the amount of 32 cents per 1,000 assessed value, blah, 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 not to exceed $1.144. So you can do the math to figure out what our current rate is. I think it would just be more transparent to tell them what the current rate is.
Thanks for your comment. Director Vaughn, did you have a comment about?
Yeah, I just want to speak up for a minute here and say that I'm working with a couple of different offices to make sure that we have our intention and that rate, because you are correct that if you do the straight math from 2005's levy, current levy rate, and we add the 32 cents, it equals that exact number. The challenge with these levies is that we want to make sure that our intent of what we're working towards completing, which is our current levy rate plus the 32 cents, is what we then have the council, or the, excuse me, our residents vote on, that we don't tie our hands unintentionally as our 2026 levy rate varies, one way or the other. We know it's not going to stay the same. That's the one thing we do know. And so I'm working with people that are even more of an expert, that are experts in this field in order to get that number, to bring it forward in the near future. So I just wanted to state that.
That's, I agree with that. Conceptually, though, we have a rate for 2025. And so we're essentially through the levy, is we're establishing a rate for 2026, correct? Which is not affected by, for example, if we did not have a levy lift effective in 2026, our property tax levy rate could be something different than 71 cents per thousand.
What we do know, it will be.
It will be, but that's, that's not, that's not particularly relevant when you consider that the levy would establish the rate for 2026.
That is the exact, that you're completely on point of what we're trying to, what I'm trying to navigate with the professionals to make sure that our intention, what our intention is, walks through with the numbers.
And that is an excellent point. Thank you for making that, Councilmember Lebo and, and Director Vaughn. There's a lot of confusion, just because the way at which we collect our taxes is dependent on two factors, one of which is the assessed valuation of all the properties in Lake Forest Park, and then the levy rate itself. And of course, we get a certain amount of dollars, which means that if our assessed valuation goes up, it means the levy rate goes down and vice versa. And we don't know, as Director Vaughn said, from year to year, which way it will go, because we don't know what the assessed valuations are going to do. So it really is the case where, I love the fact that you're leaving it to the professionals to do this, because it's, it's the worst case of doing math on TV. So thanks, yeah. Okay, so I think then, one of the things that I wanted to get out of this meeting was sort of an inclination of where everybody is in terms of what the rate should be. Yes, we don't have all the information, because my spreadsheet's weird. Yes, we don't necessarily know how we're going to, exactly which expenses we're funding that we're trying to do this levy lid lift for. But I'd like to get a sense of basically what numbers folks are gravitating towards. So does anybody want to start that discussion?
I will answer your question by not answering your question directly. And what I mean by that is, until I see a spreadsheet, I can't really commit to a specific number. But what I'm looking for in the levy is I would like to see us getting close to a balanced budget, meaning that I'd like to see that our unallocated general fund is relatively stable. It's not decreasing substantially. And so what I would be looking for is if we've added in some or all of these $900,000 cuts, what rate do we need to stabilize the general fund?
Thank you for your comment. Councilmember McCartney.
Yeah, thanks for that comment. I, I agree. I think, you know, just reading the resolution where it's at, and, you know, on the second or third, whereas it says that our costs have increased 24%. Then I look at the spreadsheet that Councilmember Lebo had shared, and I do appreciate the footnotes where it says if we did the 32%, then that's going to be at a 45%. I know that the math doesn't equal one another, but I think that's something that is really going to stick out as people are, are looking at this and reading it. Well, if this is increasing 24%, doing math to see that the cost increase is going to be 45%, that's pretty substantial to individuals. And I just keep going back to the comment that was shared at our last meeting that we've never successfully, the city has never successfully passed a levy that a 45% increase is, is going to be pretty steep, pretty big uphill battle. So I would be really interested to see in the actual math and how, you know, if we can get a lower rate, how that would fulfill the general fund and all the needs that we have. But right off the bat, a 45% seems pretty heavy lift.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Going to start pinning you guys down.
Yeah, I'm just almost saying words over here, so didn't eat that on yet. I mean, I think it's, if we're going to go through this, which the community really needs to hear a number soon for them to start understanding what it is we're asking. I think it does need to balance the budget. I, it would seem really awkward to me to go and make an ask and say, but we're still falling short on public safety. I think we do need to cover our public safety. Otherwise, it just feels like we're not, you know, that we're not, we're not doing our due diligence to ask for what really needs to be done. And then we have to follow through, of course, right? Then we actually have to make those investments in public safety, which I know we are all intending to do. And then once, I think the, one of the nice things about approaching our community, and if they approve this, and we get through these next several years, and they see we made promises and we are fulfilling those promises, and they have a fully-staffed police force, and they have all of the things that we are saying will be covered with this to make us whole, then it'll be a lot easier for us to be able to come back and ask if we need first other departments or anything else, or what we would need to continue that. And I think we just have to be very clear, this is the, this is our sort of litmus test. Can we, can we do what we're saying we're going to do? Can we, can we make those promises? Can we complete them? And can we have honest and frequent conversations with our community about where we are and how we're doing? All things that we've mentioned we want to do, so no big surprise there. But for me, that's, the sweet number is where we can actually perform and make those promises come through, come through. That's the number for me. And if that means a fully-balanced budget next year for public safety, then that would be my starting target. Whatever the spreadsheet number tells us that is.
Thank you, Member, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lebo.
I think I've been pretty clear about my position about this levy, which I think is premature and that I've asked for in the past and suggested that we have a, a citizen financial sustainability committee to have the citizens involved in deciding with input on regard to how we manage the budget going forward. We do have the survey information, which is, I think, is a very good point, but I do think we're premature with the levy.
Appreciate your comment. Okay, and just so you all know where I stand, I stick by the 32 cents number. The reason I do is because we have not nice-to-haves in the other accompanying sheet you saw. Those are actually either statutorily required, or they would lead to levels of service reductions that I'm not happy with. And so I think to the 45% figure that was given earlier, yes, that is a very large number, but keep in mind, this really reminds me of the whole dispatch services thing, where, for, we had a sweet deal with City of Bothell for a very long time. I think it was over a decade, where they didn't increase the prices very much at all, if at all. And of course, now we're paying a lot more, because it, we had to go to somebody else, and they kept up with the cost of living, and there you go. So we're kind of in that situation where the city has not had a levy lid lift ever. And so this has been what, you know, at least 20 years? And my point is that basically, yeah, the bill's going to come due at some point. And I think it's time to bite the bullet and say, yep, we've been neglecting our own city finances for quite some time. This is how we start catching up. So that's my position.
I just wanted to add one more point, and I think it's important with how we tell the story to the community. When we say that there's a 45% increase, we need to be clear that's a 45% increase in the city's slice of the entire pie. And the city's slice of the pie, and Director Vaughn can correct me, but I believe it's about eight or nine percent.
It's 7.7.
7.7, and so it's a 45, it would be a 45% increase in the 7.7% slice of the pie. And so I think that context needs to be made clear in our communications.
And then, it's City Commissioner Hill.
Just on point, because I know this question's been asked before, so I did the math before we got in here. Just a reminder, 32 cents on the valuation of a $914,000 home is $24.37 a month, $292.48 a year. We, we've talked about this number before, but just it was within context of this discussion. And so that is part of that messaging that Councilmember Goldman is speaking to, is yes, it's 45% to the city's portion, but here's what the dollar amount is. And regardless of what number you choose, that's got to be part of that messaging, because any percent up is, you know, more cost to the residents. And when you have time, I just have a comment on one of the recitals I want to cover.
Well, I know that Councilmember Goodwood, thank you for that, because I believe that's the question she always asks. But go ahead with your comment.
This is back to Councilmember Lebo's comment. It's on page four, the third to last recital, where we're talking about the 32 cents and the 1.0144 per thousand. And speaking with City Attorney Pratt, she did some research, and the law states that we need to state the rate and then the rate of increase over the remaining five years. We do not need to have the not to exceed 5% in there, just simply stating that the CPI, regional CPIU Seattle, is, meets the state law. And so that's, that's a conversation for council to have. But I also think it, it sends mixed messages of, you know, well, would you really raise it 5%? Or would you raise it CPI, you know? You know, if CPI went to 5%, would you really go there? As, as I've done research and looked at what Shoreline's done in theirs, it's not stated in their resolution, so I'd assume that's just a policy-level discussion that they have of what they aren't willing to exceed. But you don't need that final language in there, just stating the CPI is sufficient to meet state law.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Riddle.
Yeah, so, so you're saying that the, we don't need by state law to provide any cap if we're, we're tying it to CPI?
Correct.
And I think the other piece of that is, is that council can, council does not have to take all the way the full allotted amount that is allowed by law if it is determined that we do not need to take in that additional amount of money. Do you, I recall that there's something about like a carryover for one year of...
Yeah, there, there is a provision of bank capacity where if the city doesn't take it for years, they keep track, and you can go back and use that banked capacity if you need it. And some cities have done that.
Yeah, so that way we, again, we can come in and say, we had lower expenses this year, you know, so we can bank that capacity to the next year in the event that we have some unexpected public safety expense go up. Just because we pick a number and we pick a cap of a CPI doesn't mean that we always have to take that full amount. And we're not always losing that money in the event that we are responsible. It's probably not going to happen, but it, as you said, it's happened before, where people have banked the money and...
And to clarify, that's on that 1%. We would have to check... And to clarify, that's on that one percent. We would have to check the law on how that affects levies and CPI. I think that's something that, um, we'd want to research.
Okay.
Just to double check.
Yes, please do.
All right, thank, thank you, Councilmember. And I think, uh, the other thing, um, I'll mention since you hadn't is that, uh, it shows up in, uh, the second, uh, third to last, whereas if we count the struck out one, so it's at the bottom of page two, it also mentions not to exceed five percent there.
Yeah, a second location.
Right. Hey, well, well, thank you, council. I don't know if the city staff got a good idea of the temperature of the council, but nevertheless, I think basically we do have to, we, we do have to have the formal head nod at the, um, business meeting on the twenty-sixth. I'd just say three days from now, so please be prepared, to name a figure, that is. Okay, I think then, uh, if this, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Lebo.
I think it's relevant, though, if we look at what the historical rate of the Seattle CPI, uh, dash U is to see if the council would be comfortable, um, with the public understanding what the possible rate increase would be if we go and look at some of the historical rates. So the five percent was put in there as a cap. Thank you.
Understood, thanks. Okay, anybody else? Great, okay, so, um, again, uh, we'll, we'll have a more discussion on Thursday on this. I think we're going to go to the next item then. That's my thing. All right, so it's, uh, something that Councilmember Levo brought up, the draft resolution authorizing a sales use and tax increase of point one percent for public safety purposes pursuant to House Bill two, uh, twenty fifteen. And I think, uh, um, I sent to you all, uh, the final bill analysis that was done by the legislative analysts in the House. And, uh, um, I guess basically the question is, um, do we, do we want to do anything about this, if anything? So Councilmember Levo, do you want to start the discussion?
So in this most recent legislative session, they did pass and gross Senate House Bill number twenty fifteen, which did authorize cities, um, to increase, uh, for public safety reasons, the sales tax by one tenth of a percent. I hope I got that right. And it also afforded the opportunity to apply for grants. But there are conditions both to raising the sales tax as well as for the application of the grant. But this does afford us an opportunity to broaden our revenue stream as well as, um, give us the opportunity to seek grants from the state for which the state has set aside monies for that.
Thank you. Um, so just so everybody's kind of caught up in this, uh, Councilmember Lebo's correct. This gives us the authority councilmanically to raise the sales tax up to point one percent. Uh, the county, I think, already has the right to raise it to point, uh, raise it point three percent. And so as a call, though, I think between the county and the city, we can't raise it combined more than point three percent. So one thing that I was hoping to check, but I hadn't had a chance to, is what, uh, King County charges in terms of public safety for the sales tax, if any. Well, I'll do more research on that. And then the other thing that I had a question on was, um, you're right, there's another part of the bill which, uh, qualifies, um, cities to apply for grants. I think it's like a hundred million dollar pot of money. And, uh, um, I think, though, there was a decoupling between having to have, uh, the council approve that sales tax increase and applying for grants. You still had to, um, satisfy the same basic conditions that, you know, you had a sheriff who was certified doing this and you had a police department that was training to do that. So there were all kinds of, to me, reasonable conditions on applying for either of those things. I think we completely fulfilled both, or well, all those conditions, but I don't want to speak to that. I'd rather have the chief speak on that, but let's assume that that's the case. So does anybody have any questions about this particular proposal?
This is a relatively new bill. Um, it sounds like we still have some questions about it. As I understand it, there aren't, um, there isn't a, like, imminent deadline related to this bill, is that correct? It's, it's, there's no take it by this date or lose it?
I believe it's by the end of twenty twenty-eight.
Okay, so no imminent date. So I think in that sense, it might make, uh, it makes sense for us to kind of noodle and, and think a little bit more on this. I think it's a really great idea. It's, uh, I just want to make sure that we, we do it right and that we have all our ducks in a row. But I wouldn't be opposed to looking at this, um, in general. I think one of the nice things is, is these sorts of sales and use taxes they do, uh, collect from folks outside the city as well. So it relieves a, a burden, uh, on our communities specifically, though they like to shop local. So yeah, I just would like to know a little bit more about how it's interfacing with the current situation, but.
Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember McCartney?
Thank you. Um, I, I would just want to extend my support of this. I, I think that this is, you know, really thoughtful approach, especially as we're all pondering how do we generate more money without, you know, absent a money tree. I think this is a really great opportunity and this isn't something that is absolutely detrimental. From, from a cost perspective from people and also too, in our city, we have a lot of renters that are long-term renters in the city. And so this is just another way to truly touch the people that are utilizing these services and then also accessing some funds from people who don't live within the city. So again, just extending my support, I would love to, uh, look into this further and I think this is a really great, great proposal. Thanks for bringing this.
And thanks for your comment. Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Goldman?
Um, yeah, I have two thoughts. The first, I'm skimming over the, uh, Washington Legislature Bill Report. And it does seem that this point one percent council manic sales tax is tethered in some way with the local law enforcement grants, but not in a way that I can understand by reading this paragraph. So I would like to hear from staff, you know, if they could explain more about, do we have any additional requirements or is it simply we pass this? And then my second comment is, of all the different types of taxes we have in the city, I think sales tax is one of my least favorites. Because as other council members have pointed out in the past, it's regressive. Whether you're making twenty thousand dollars a year or two million dollars a year, you're paying the same sales tax on the same, say, tube of toothpaste. And so I have, I would prefer property tax over sales tax in that it is a less regressive option. But if it is the, one of the only options available to us, I'm, I'm not going to write it off entirely just to say that it is not my favorite option.
Thank you, Councilmember. Does anybody else have any other comments? Okay, um, I'll put in my two cents worth. Um, one of the things that I thought about was, I agree with Councilmember Goldman about the regressive nature of sales taxes. The other thing that I had a concern about was that, for instance, if we choose to move forward with the levy lid lift, we put in a fairly, uh, strong, we put in strong language about the exemptions that are available. And there's, we don't know the magnitude of those exemptions. Could be twenty thousand bucks, could be two hundred thousand bucks. We don't know. But the point is that, um, I think it's nice to have another thing that we could, another lever we could pull to generate revenue should basically our revenue, uh, from, say, the proposed lift, lid lift doesn't, doesn't come into what we think it is. So for that reason, I like the deliberative approach on this. I, I like, I think it's a good idea, uh, in general to pursue. But the fact is that we do need more levers to pull. And as, uh, Councilmember Riddle pointed out, we've already pulled the utility tax lever as much as we're probably going to pull that. So, so it really is good to have basically something that we can, uh, turn to that's a new source of revenue and keep it in our quiver until we need it. Uh, City Administrator Hill? Attorney Pratt, sorry.
Okay, I just, I might be, see if I can answer, uh, Councilmember Goldman's, uh, question. The, but when council passes this resolution for the sales tax, you have to be able to make a finding that you qualify for the grant. So you have to be, counsel us to be able to say, we meet each of the requirements for getting one of the grants. So that analysis would all have to be done before council passed it.
Thank you so much, yeah. And I think, yeah, for that reason, I'm kind of, uh, uh, happy with having, um, the police chief lead that, uh, lead that invest, well, not investigation, lead that finding, yeah, and, uh, get back to us on whether we do in fact qualify. Councilmember Levo, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Um, as stated, there are two parts to this. And so I think as we've committed to our, uh, public that we should be seeking as many grants as we can, the findings that are needed for the grant are the same findings needed for the revenue enhancement. So I would encourage the staff to look at the opportunities to, uh, achieve the, the finding that we do meet the requirements for grants such that if, uh, if we also think it appropriate that we can also increase the sales tax for public safety. I think broadening our, uh, revenue is an important aspect of it. Uh, sales tax is something that's paid by our, uh, public, but it's also paid for by, uh, others outside of our city limits. And, um, there are regressive taxes. Um, property taxes are regressive, utility taxes are regressive, and sales taxes are aggressive, progressive. We live in a state that has a very regressive tax structure. In fact, one of the most regressive tax structures in the country. So I think maybe we might be, uh, debating whether we've got three angels on the top of the pin or we got four. But rather to say one is more regressive than the other is a relative term of they are both regressive.
Fair point, thank you. Okay, so, um, I think the question is basically, uh, do you want to take the, uh, proposal back and, um, work on it a bit more and, uh, um, at the appropriate time, bring it up? I think that since this is, uh, um, revenue generating, it would best go through business and finance first.
Well, my hope was that, uh, we would encourage the city staff to look at the necessary effort to, um, achieve the grant, uh, findings, uh, such that we would then have the opportunity to either seek the grant or to seek the, uh, increase in our revenue. So, uh, I would encourage the council to take, uh, some sort of, uh, motion or direction to encourage the staff to move forward in that direction, to achieve the findings.
City Administrator Hill?
So some of this work's already begun. The chief is looking at, um, this because we are an accredited, 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 accredited police department. Um, a lot of this, we do qualify, but there are some holes that need to be filled. He's going to work on a report to bring back to council on exactly what it would take to, um, qualify for these grants. So, um, feel free to make that motion, but, yeah, um, the chief's been working on this.
Thank you for that, uh, update. Um, so Councilmember Levo, I think then, um, would you like to draft the, uh, resolution to move this, or I guess it is a resolution to move this, uh, forward?
I can draft a resolution to the city, to staff, to, um, do the necessary legwork for the findings. Yes.
Appreciate your work on that.
I would ask, is, is a resolution or motion, uh, needed for the city staff to move forward? Or can we just ask the city staff to move forward and that they can come back with a report?
The shake of the head that, uh, City Administrator Hill just gave me suggests no, so we don't, we do, we do not need one. All right, Councilmember McCartney, you've been very patient, sorry about that.
Oh, no, that's, I was just going to ask the same thing. If we needed a motion to formalize that, if so, I'd be, I'm willing to make that, but I guess we're good. Thanks.
And Attorney Pratt, that was also your hand? Okay. All right, great. So I think, uh, we have, uh, we, we, we have a plan for that. Right, since, uh, this is a, uh, six, uh, council committee of the whole meeting, um, there's no other business. So at this point, uh, unless there's a good of the order thing, uh, we adjourn. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, take care.